All right, good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, the first day of July in the year 2025.
And out of the bonus of caution, I'm accusing myself from item 80 because I am a landlord. I'm also accusing from items 81, 82, and 143 because my wife's employer has worked with one of the organizations on these items in the past. Last, I'm accusing from items 111 and 112 because it's unclear who is working on these items. Thank you.
All right, pardon me. All right, the clerk needs a few minutes. While the clerk is taking a few minutes to tally up our specials and amendments for the 151 items that are on the agenda today, all right, and for our vignette from our communities, given the situation that we're here in, here in the city of Los Angeles in Southern California, I want to call in Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know what's happening to our immigrant communities is medicine. These are isolated cases or bureaucratic missteps. This is cruel and it's calculated. Neighbors are being taken off our streets in broad daylight without warning, without a badge, without a trace. Families are being torn apart in ways that feel scripted for a movie or a show, but it isn't. It's fiction. This is real life, a walking nightmare, when masked men in unmarked cars are allowed to snatch people off the streets without explanation. It shakes the very foundation of who we are. Well, that's what happened to Julie, a mother of three, a community leader, a woman who's called South LA home for over two decades, taken on her way to work, disappeared for simply asserting her rights, for refusing to vanish quietly. In her moment, her family will share more of the hell they've been living through. The fact that what happened to Julie isn't just about one person, it's about the kind of country we're becoming. And it's what's happening right now will go down as one of the most shameful chapters in our nation's history. Even in the face of all this, our love for one another is louder. They can't silence us, they can't sue us, they can't militarize our streets, and they can't take away our dignity as people and our values. No one man, no king, no president will ever do that. But today, I'm honored to be joined by Julie's sister-in-law, Guadalupe Gonzalez, along with her two daughters, Angelina and Jennifer. Guadalupe?
Thank you, Consal. Hi, I'm Guadalupe Gonzalez. But everybody know me by Lupita because I'm the senior house organizer with ICE. But I'm here not because I'm an organizer, because I'm family and be impacted by this situation and terrorists we have here in LA. My two nieces, they have almost a week without the mother. And then we don't know where is she? And then we don't know who taking. We calling ICE and Homeland Security. And Homeland Security says, we don't have nobody with that name. And then it's not only Julie from our community, it's more at 2,000 people like that. When we looking for every single detention center, looking for Julie, we find other people in the same situation with us. They don't know where their families, they don't know what they they happened. And then we know what happened. The contractors from the government, the federal government took these people without the law. And then I asking everyone here to do something, make a call, send a letters to our senators, to Congresswoman or congressmen to do something to find these people is terrible. In United States, we have this situation that I'm really, really impacted. It's no answer. We went to police and then they don't want to take our, the report because we don't know what happened with Julie. But finally, they took the report. But after that, what are we waiting for? To acting? And then I please do something for our families, for our loved ones, and then for our communities because it's impossible our communities live like that in fear. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Price, and thank you all for coming and thank you for the courage to tell your stories and communicate to the world that watches LA City Council the horror that our city is undergoing during these times.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I had real concerns and serious questions about this item in committee. Any allegation of untruthfulness or intimidation should be investigated and, if necessary, fully prosecuted. But that means having a report that is broad enough to look at all actors and all proponents, those who collected signatures for the referendum, as well as those who sought to withdraw those voter signatures. Because we know that engaging in misleading tactics are not unique to one group or one organization or one cause when it comes to this issue. And I know this because I have personally been targeted by misleading smear campaigns by the very group now complaining about this behavior. I voted no on the tourism wage ordinance because I didn't think it was thoughtful and I didn't think it took into account the economic realities. I also didn't think the time was right. And I was well within my rights to vote the way I did, just like all of you were free to vote the way that you did. Yet, in the last month, I heard from dozens of concerned citizens in my council district about a harassing and misleading communication that unite here and their counter ballot measures pushed out. And I'm going to quote it today, just like I did in committee, quote, "Tracy Park voted against raising..." Guys, can we be quiet in here, please? It's really hard to hear over all the talking.
Please let's give the Speaker the attention.
Thank you, Council President. And I quote...
All right, all right. Sergeants, if you can let us know who's disrupting the meeting and I will issue them their first warning. Councilmember Park?
And I quote, "Tracy Park voted against raising the minimum wage for hospitality workers. Now her billionaire corporate allies are collecting signatures to lower the minimum wage. A new complaint alleges paid signature gatherers are using misdirection and misconduct to collect these signatures. Don't sign the petition. Email Tracy Park and tell her to stop this misleading effort to lower the minimum wage." That communication is deceptive and misleading, suggesting that I'm involved in a ballot measure. I have nothing to do with it. No one consulted me about it. No one even asked my opinion about it. And yet, this group is out there suggesting to people that somehow I should stop this, the very same democratic process that they're using. So I take serious issue with this and I take very serious issue with the deceptive, misleading, and outright dishonest tactics on all sides. That's why I tried to introduce this amendment in committee and I'm asking for your support today because any report that's going to be prepared should look at the actions of the signature gatherers for the referendum and the individuals who are saluting people to withdraw their signatures from the referendum. I ask for your iVote, colleagues. Thank you.
All right. Any other speakers on this item? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So my apologies because I actually registered a no, but we're taking the amendment first, correct?
There has no, yes, there's going to be the vote on the amendment first and then the matter itself, depending on the outcome of the amendment.
Of the amendment vote, right. Then we'll take the overall item. So I thought we were, I missed the amendment. So if we could just clear the board for a new vote, because I actually...
All right. Do we, do we take a vote on anything on this item?
No.
Okay.
It was, a vote has not been taken because Councilmember Park was giving her comments.
Right. No, I understand, but I accidentally hit my no vote. That's why I was...
Okay, Mr. Soto Martinez?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you so much for bringing this amendment forward, Ms. Park. I know we had a discussion in committee about this very issue. No amendment was presented at that moment, and if it was written as this, I would have supported it because I don't think there's anything wrong with what you're trying to do. But I also want to just clarify a couple of things. Elected officials, we signed up to be mistreated and tarred and feathered by the press and the public. That is part of our job. There have been plenty of things that have been said about me that have been misleading and I didn't agree with, but I didn't bring it into this chamber. Second of all, the reports that have been brought forward are about people being assaulted, people being lied to, people being mistreated, and they've been documented, recorded through testimony, through video, and many other things. So I just want to sort of make a distinction between those two things. Politicians, when we run for office, we sign up for that, whether you like it or not. But the people out there in the street getting assaulted because they're trying to bring information to the public, they didn't sign up for that. And so I'm supportive of your amendment, but I also want to make that clear distinction. There are, these are two very different issues that we're talking about. But again, I was supportive and I hope folks will support it as well.
All right, I got Councilmember Hernandez and I got Councilmember Rodriguez on the board. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, colleagues. I understand the concerns that are coming out of the signature gathering, but I will say that it feels like the energy perhaps is misplaced. You know, these signature gathers are working for entities, some of them very rich entities. And so if there's going to be accountability, I think it should be with those entities instead of the individuals that are on the ground doing the work. I literally was at the farmer's market a few weeks ago. Someone was collecting signatures against the wage increase. They had no idea what it was about. They were just gathering signatures. And so instead of trying to put all of the weight of repercussions on these signature gathers, I think the accountability needs to be redirected to the folks who are actually paying people to be out there.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez, actually, for bringing some kind of calm and, you know, thought to this conversation. To be clear, I didn't sign up to be assaulted or abused. I signed up to be a public servant. Many of us did. So I wanted to just clarify that record. But, you know, when it comes to ballot measures and everything that's happening, of all the things, to be honest, anyone who is assaulted, doesn't matter what you do, whether it's being pursued by a federal agent or whether it's being pursued by a false actor of a federal agent, that's what I want LAPD's time to be invested in doing is pursuing individuals that are engaged in assault, in criminal activity. And I think this idea that's trying to assign blame to one side or another is kind of futile, given the demands of what we need LAPD to be focused on. But I think, you know, performative politics is the name of the game these days. So again, I don't, you know, I support Ms. Park's amendment for the sake of balance, but to be honest, such all, such a joke. Everyone needs to grow the hell up and voters need to be educated on what they're signing, number one, because I've seen exploitive tactics all the way around, and it's wrong. But apparently, that's what everyone feels comfortable to deduce themselves to at this juncture. And it's sad because, frankly, whether it's happening at the federal level or the local level, it's all wrong. But we need the adults in the room to show up. And what we need our law enforcement officers to be involved in is doing the work of protecting our communities based on the egregious acts that are happening, frankly, at all fronts.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. And I'll just add to this. I will support Councilmember Park's amendment, but I would say this about all of it. Everybody in this city who claims to care about this city, next election cycle, you need to be focused on the national congressional elections. We do not need to blow any resources fighting with each other amongst ourselves. And so that is my editorial comment about all of it. And with that, I'll ask the clerk to open the roll on this item as amended, or can we...
I think it is best, Mr. President, to take a vote on the amendment itself and then...
But the maker of the motion is supportive of the amendment.
Okay, then the item can be voted on in one vote?
The maker of the motion supports the amendment, so we can vote on it as amended.
Mr. President, I was told if there is an objection on the floor, it can't...
Is there an objection on the floor? Besides Mr. Spindler?
Okay, then it appears not so. So it can, this item can be voted and recap again, 113, as amended.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate to vote.
12 ayes, 2 noes.
So we have an item, actually, before I talk, I just want to make sure that Councilmember Marquisi, you know, it's not my fault that you have snitches on your staff, so please don't blame me for that. Blame your staffers for that. Moving on, we have an item on parking meters, right? Parking meters and increasing the rates of parking meters. Well, let's talk about the rates of parking meters and where parking meters should actually be established. Wouldn't you know it, over on Elrond Hubbard Way, there's actually no parking meters and it's illegal for the cult of Scientology to do that and the city is losing money over it. We have a lot of new faces here and they should know that the city is losing millions of dollars for not installing parking meters over on Elrond Hubbard Way, where the big blue building is Scientology. I know a lot of people here who use TikTok know quite a bit about Scientology, and I'm sure many of you probably have seen William Goo and other people. But this is actually a legitimate motion on the agenda right now that the city is deliberately choosing not to install parking meters over there because they do sweetheart deals with the city so they get shady money under the table as cuts in order to continue prosecuting people that dare criticize Scientology and all their manner of political shenanigans. Now, we're going to move on to yet another agenda item, and it's actually relating to the Brown Act violations for having law enforcement officers in closed session. In closed session, the only people allowed are the staffers themselves and the council members and the city attorney deputies. Why is it that law enforcement officers are present in your closed sessions? Well, how do you think I get so many of the other snitches as well, including the staffers? You're not supposed to have law enforcement officers inside closed sessions. It's only supposed to be the staffers, the council members, and the deputies over at the city attorney's office. This is why this entire body has so many issues with snitches front, left, right, and center, and you have yourselves to blame for it. But, you know, I'm glad. But hey, at least you guys don't get any cut of that money that they sell over to KTLA 5, myself, probably even out of LA, and even Shrimp, you know, even a Bike Guy. Poor Bike Guy has to get in on the, on the cut too. We're going to move on here to another interesting topic as to the special item that I know they're not going to give me time for, but I'm going to make sure I get it out anyway. The reason why they had closed session is because they had to retain the Covington firm because the city's under various criminal investigations by the DOJ for the various felonies they commit by laundering money from the homelessness programs, by having their little nest eggs at their various nonprofits, that once they leave being a council member, they have that cushion to fall back on. And it's fine that 72 people a week minimum on Skid Row alone are dying a week because they still get their cut of the money. It's fine that at least seven people a day are dying right now as we speak in this air-conditioned room because all the homelessness fraud programs are supposed to actually help people, are actually not helping people at all. It's fine because they get their cut of it. And it's fine that we keep ignoring the homelessness issue. Moving on to my general public comment at this point. So the beautiful part about general public comment is we can just sort of riff on anything we want, right? And I'm going here today to riff on the fact that, first of all, Hugo finally answered a question yesterday in front of William Goo, the first time Hugo's ever dared look any reporter in the eye in a very long time. Hugo actually ran in the middle of traffic and would much rather have offed himself from a car coming onto him in incoming traffic than answer a simple question. That's the kind of person that Hugo is. That's what he thinks leadership constitutes. And this is what you can expect out of city council. This is an entire clown show. I know some of you actually believe in this crap, but this is a whole clown show. You have an indicted current price for felony fraud. You have Weezer, yet another council member that went down on fraud. You have at least two others that are going to come down on felony charges. And you have Padilla that literally said to the police chief, "Hey, can you give me advance notice when the feds are going to raid my house for all the felonies I've committed?" I mean, this is the kind of shit that you can expect out of city council. And you better take the comment on special agenda item because I know you're going to try to bullshit your way out of that one.
My name is Kelsey Mangan. I am with the Rent Brigade and I am a tenant in Council District 11, speaking on Agenda Item Number 80. Please vote yes on the permanent ordinance to end rent evictions. The recent wildfires worsened in a severely limited housing market. We were already dealing with an eviction crisis and hundreds of people have been displaced due to renovation work. Rent eviction is an urgent problem that the city council unanimously voted to put an end to with a temporary ordinance. City council must adopt a permanent ordinance today to ensure people are safe in their homes and protected by this ordinance. I have lived in Los Angeles for 13 years and I love my community. There's no reason me or my neighbors should lose our homes to renovation work. This allows landlords to evict loyal tenants and rent them for more money, which will drive up broader rent and only worsen this housing crisis. Please vote in support of the ordinance today to stop landlords from exploiting this loophole. Thank you.
Prohibition of the use of the N-word and the C-word epithet. Now, what does that mean in English, Mr. Dogson? Mr. Dogson, the DOJ and the government want to know why you were suppressing the C-word, spelled C, and followed by a U like you and an N like you and a T for terrific for Trump. The reason behind this non-vulgar viewpoint, as you see, we got a yellow-white caps here, like me, a white nigger too, talking about speaker time to speak for the remainder of the meeting. Well, I'm literally practicing this because it's a pattern and practice of government suppressing your free speech as white niggers too and your free speech of white niggers too, like me, a white nigger too.
Speaker, you should move on to your next item.
Oh, I don't get to finish the N-word. All right, I'll go to the next item. Now, regarding what David O. Carter said just the other day regarding shelters, free rent, rentable living, and asshole taxpayers like you that pay taxes to these stupid assholes, dumbass, to understand is that ramen noodle, noodle 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 noodle, I'm on number 135, Ms. Attorney, for the record. Fuck you, thank you. Regarding Maholand Drive, the only thing you can drive in Maholand is this into the Constitution. Donald Trump hates you, you're all going to hell. So then I go into 138 where that dickhead Hernandez and Joado are talking about city neighborhoods, emergency increase. Well, Smoke and Scan and I already know the problem. We're being smoked and scammed by $90,000 in District 1 when we should be voting for Mr. Spindler and not the interruption by the Gucci bag lady, Emelda the union worker under David Jose Huerta and that other bitch who sent her staff to try to kill a police officer, Ms. Joado there. Thank you for the interruption. Now, let me go into the other enlightening words of lightning because I'm a white nigger too, for the record. I am heartbroken that you, Bob Bloomfield, and you, is your name Padilla? Where's your little chongo, the Gucci bag? You didn't bring them today. Too bad. Now into my non-agenda public comment. 42 USC, 1983, the Bayak, 52, 142, fuck local government in the name of Donald Trump, who saved the fucking LAPD from all the riots, in the name of Bondi, who will soon sue the government of Los Angeles for your fucked up sanctuary cities, stealing public money, stealing taxpayers' money, and only one white nigger like me has the RNC on his side. So when you want to vote Democrat, think of your housing situation. Think of your rent situation. Think of how you're living in this fucked up city of Los Angeles with all those boarded windows, with all that illegal shit going on, because illegal is illegal! And closing argument, Smoke and Scan, you're right. The attorney wears a mask. What a fucking cunt. Thank you.
All items and general comment. So number 140, it's the end of rap music, everybody. Today, we are going to ban one of the worst words in the English language. It starts with an N and ends with an R. Thank goodness, this was my plan all along. I sit in my home in Jewish Israel in Encino, and out of the windows of young men come rap lyrics in the morning, blasting filthy anti-Semitic remarks, using the N-word, using the F-word, disturbing my community and targeting me racially as a white man. So today, we are going to ban the use of N-word rap music in this city, and if anybody blares it out, we'll be arrested on sight. Let's give Unissa a hand for her motion. Because if a white man can't say a word that starts with an N, a black man can either. And now we get into the other agendas. We have a couple of liquor licenses today, one in Tracy Park's district and the other over there in Monique Al Rodriguez's district. And of course, Monique Al and Little Miss Park over there are more interested in selling alcohol and having men get drunk and beat their wives and kids instead of protecting public safety. If you're going to protect public safety, you two lunatic hoes, why don't you ban liquor licenses in the city for one straight year? We are oversaturated with alcohol. Everywhere I go, Bob, there's alcohol. When I pick up a prostitute on 77th and Fig, there's alcohol. When I go home, there's alcohol. Alcohol everywhere. Fuck alcohol. And then we talk about the fiscal emergency. We are in a crisis. We are missing $2 billion of stolen homeless funds, but I have good news. Marquisi knows where the money is and the star witness, everybody, is going to be Matt Zabo to testify against the council members and send them to prison. Let's give Matt Zabo a hand. Now you see, the fourth floor, everybody, they got it on lockdown. You can't go up to the council offices anymore and ask the city services, especially Emelda Padilla, who locked down her council office because she's afraid of what?
FBI.
And why are you afraid of the FBI?
Because I'm a criminal, allegedly.
That's right. So I say, go get them, FBI. Go get them. And now for the general comment. As Marquisi knows, when I was leaving his council chambers Friday, Emelda waved a finger at me and said something about my deceased mother in Spanish. Now, you have to understand here that my mother was a goddamn fucking hoe. She fucked every black man over in the West Hills.
This is not, this is not within the purview of the city of Los Angeles. I'll ask you to get on a topic germane to the Los Angeles City Council or sit down.
Would you let me talk? Would you let me talk? If you're going to take and attack somebody's family, they have a right to retard, right?
All right, Madam City Attorney, this speaker's off topic.
Isn't it true, doesn't a city council member have a right to criticize people?
Speaker, you need to speak to something within the subject matter jurisdiction of this body, otherwise you can forfeit your time.
Okay, so simply put, as we see in the Sicilians, a fool a gots. In other words... In other words, you dumb bitch, fix my street lights over in Baynac.
Already know who I am. Hello, Mr. President. I'll tell you, I'm very impressed with Hernandez and also Hugo for doing the things they're doing for migrants. People like that, it's nonsense. This land is not theirs. This is, this is built, this building right here is built by slaves and also people from other countries, even the walls. I don't know what nonsense. I've heard so much nonsense, racist stuff today out there from this lady, that man that just finished talking and that other idiot. This is not a circus. This, we are people. We bleed, we love each other. This is God's land. This is not a white land. This is Jesus land. He made it for the people. Sir, I hope you make a law against people like that because people like that need a law when they're insulting people and talking like that about people, that people can hear it because it's not right. People, if they got a law for everything else, they should have a law for discrimination like that. Because people like that shouldn't be around of people that do good like Ms. Hernandez and Hugo.
All items on our 154-page-long agenda.
You'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
116, 116. Hold on one second, Councilmember Hernandez.
Council President, it's too loud. I can't hear the public comment.
All right, we'll ask everyone in the gallery to quiet down so that we can hear the speakers as they come forward. Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Also, those of us around the horseshoe, if we can be mindful of our volume as their conversations. Hold on, I'll call on you when it's your time to come back. So everyone around the horseshoe can be mindful. We got a lot of people in here. The acoustic in this room makes your voices carry. So we'll ask everybody in the horseshoe, around the horseshoe and in the gallery to be mindful. Thank you.
So we know that the council president is starting to rush this agenda so he can go on vacation. We know his job is very hard and we know how amendments get voted on. Anyways, emergency. We're glad that it's longer June. We're glad that all of you feel really proud. And while you were doing the most performative things by putting our lights and hanging out flags, the city was being raided. Immigrant communities, trans communities, folks that continue to build the city unlike the rest of you were being raided. So I'm glad that all of you felt really, really, really proud during June. What you can actually do, Council President, instead of just declaring an emergency, you can set forth a rent eviction protection. You can set forth providing a safety net for these individuals. And you can definitely set forth advancing an equity investment in transgender expansive and intersex communities. Yet, the CEO, CAO was really quick to commission a report on how not only do we need to pay the police overtime for beating on the protestors, not knowing how they're doing, making up rules like they do during this meeting. The council president's staff refuses to ever come out. Not Maurice, not your chief of staff, not you. So you can, so you cannot let, you cannot hide under LAPD on how to run these meetings. Item number 122. Again, more funding for the LAPD, more transfer of funds. So again, you can continue to run this city broke. You can continue to make sure that we continue to pay out time and time again, all the abuse and the excessive use of force by the LAPD. Item number 134. Again, instead of funding, putting more money to pay for the lights, we asked that the city council set forth an initiative, a motion like the state did, like the county did, that is truly investing in the lives of our people and not just continue to criminalize us and create an LAPD force that is going to continue to lead the city to be broke. Item number, lastly, item number 144. Again, we need a report back from the LAPD. We do know that the LAPD is working with ICE. All of the council members know that. That's why Officer Tracy here is afraid. I don't know why you're afraid. You're constantly walking around with a whole gang of LAPD officers around you. So I'm pretty sure all the protests are going to get to you. At any rate, we would love to be able to make sure that this city council moves forward. You have one more day. That's the reason why you're rushing everything to tomorrow. And you will continue to see the chaos, the circus. Not even Tracy can bring the decent white people that want to make Venice white, even though it was never white, from the west side here. Not even they can say quietly in this meeting, "Look at the joke that you create." And this is all being led by the joke of a council president that is Marquise Harris Dawson. So I cannot wait for you to get indicted like all your predecessors or get voted out of office. Do I get another minute for general public comment? Because I can keep going. Great, general public comment. Thank you to the offices of this body that are invested in working with us, making sure that the community is able to lead a budget advocacy, is able to lead policy procedures that isn't just training for the LAPD so they can continue to murder people like Linda Becerra and any trans person, any black person, any homeless person that they continue to see. So we look forward to working with every single council office, ideally nine or 10 of you, because we know the five offices that are trashed are never going to move. And more importantly, I know Monica is out doing something. But Councilmember Padilla, podemos ir a la tele y decir lo que vamos a hacer por el pueblo. Este consilio, este cuerpo puede invertir en nuestra comunidad y no solamente ponerse enfrente de las cámaras y decir, "Oh, lástima que ICE no podemos controlar nada." So do your job, you can do this. And we look forward to all your staffers actually listening and not just continue to ignore the public just because Marquise leads by example. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dani. I was born in LA at Cedar Sinai. My mother was born at Cedar Sinai. My sisters and I have been raised by communities across LA and we're a family of renters. When they ask me about my work, I could use jargon like I work in equitable building decarbonization. But instead, I explain that I'm working to get renters good air conditioning to withstand these longer heat waves or necessary housing repairs to reduce their utility bills and improve their health. The biggest response I get is, won't those upgrades increase my rent or put me at risk of eviction? Tenants should not have to choose between housing quality or housing stability. This is a false choice. Council members, you have the power today to challenge this false choice. You have the power today to achieve a major win across both housing and climate. Please vote in support of the permanent ordinance to end rent evictions. Thank you.
Please start the time.
All right, good morning. Let's start with item number one, item number one. Me na mo gin dam, you know, she da liu dai lai de bo. Yaokai si zai kan gu liu ni mai duai bei ban jiu sai ban an. Zaihou qing fan, se mo sai lai, o de long man. Hai na mo gin dam, kiu nam chei ah. Ba de chen bo kan. Now let's move on to item number two. Buai gu da ya, kiu ya se go. Bo yang da sa sai ya, boi jiao boi sai go. Gan gi kuai lu gi, ma da ma sai gan. Kiu lai, liu go fu kuang zi hei. Biu yan so dai fu, sao bo ting ya di. Bai xing yong yong, boi dai dou qing sui. Let's move on to item number 140. Item number 140 is, seems like we are trying to ban some words. So thank you very much, Council President Smoking Scan. Now I want to ask our council president, Smoking Scan, am I allowed to use the word smoking scan? Am I allowed to use the word Dana? Am I allowed to use the word Big Amy? I'm not allowed to say the word Audit LA? Because right now, the council president is trying to ban one word. Tomorrow, they're going to ban two word. Next year, they're going to ban 10 word. Eventually, they're going to ban every single English word right there. It seems like our city attorney is doing a great job on violating the First Amendment rights. So I am here to shout out to our Smoking Scan to make sure you are, everybody, every one of your family members and chat groups are informed that we are no longer allowed to use some words. Continue that I heard a lot of blacks are using the word every single day on the train, on the bus, on the hallway, on the street, just because they are blacks, so they have a special privilege? So just because they are blacks, so they are allowed to have a special rights? So just because they are blacks, just so they have a special rights over any other Caucasian? So because I am a Caucasian, so that means I don't have a special privilege? So I thought that, I thought that was, we are no longer in the segregation. I thought white slavery is no longer allowed. I thought white slavery is no longer permitted under the law. But right now, somehow, just because you are black, you have allowed, you will be afforded the First Amendment rights. Just because you are white, you are no longer afford the First Amendment rights. I want to say thank you very much, city attorney. And I will never give up my First Amendment and Second Amendment rights. Thank you very much, Council President Smoking Scan. I will continue to be here, no matter how many times they use LAPD to arrest me.
Many cities have ordinances regulating, limiting or banning short-term rentals. However, enforcing these ordinances is often difficult. Short-term rental platforms do not display the addresses of properties on their listings, making it nearly impossible a tariff unit is legally licensed or whether platforms are collecting and remitting the correct transit occupancy taxes. SB 346 will level the playing field by providing local governments with the physical addresses of each short-term rental, enhancing audit capability over TOT and ensuring the correct amount of TOTs being collected and remitted to local governments. With major events taking place right now here in Los Angeles over the next few years, I encourage you to support item number 97 to ensure the correct amount of TOTs being collected. Thank you for your time and consideration.
You'll have three minutes for the items, one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. 116 and 117 are both extensions of emergency orders, one relating to the fires and one relating to what's sort of being described in the agenda as stuff like vandalism, looting. But I think the real emergency is the way the LAPD are treating demonstrators. And we've already paid out close to $1 billion in liabilities since 2020. That's going to cause the city a lot more liabilities. Maybe you should address that in this extension of an emergency ordinance. Items 124 and 125 are lighting up City Hall and ceremonies and all this bullshit for LGBTQIA community and for the Americans with Disabilities Act. I, as a queer person, obviously I support the LGBTQIA community. And as an advocate, I support disabilities. But what's bullshit about it is you do these ceremonial things. You throw $400 at lights. But you're not actually making any tangible steps to improve the lives of those people. Members of the LGBTQIA community are twice as likely than the rest of the population to become homeless. At least 31% of the unhoused resident population have some sort of disability. So instead of spending $438 of taxpayer money on some bullshit lights that don't mean anything, maybe put that funding towards something that actually helps these populations. Item 122 is $165,000 to be taken out of the general fund to fund the LAPD further. The LAPD got over 40% of our budget in the most recent fiscal year, for this fiscal year we just started. Also was negotiated to hire the positions that originally you voted to remove in the initial budget. So it's bullshit that you can't just let their department work out those things themselves. Item 140. C is for counsel and their corruption. U is for undermining the First Amendment and the Brown Act while our city is declining. N is for now is not a good time to attack freedom of speech. T is for tragedy. The people are enduring in your failure to lead. Anybody catch what that's spelled out? I think it's bullshit that you're prioritizing things that, because your ears are offended, you're so weak, you have to curb freedom of speech for everyone. And you know for a fact, this is going to bring lawsuits. It's bullshit that Councilmember Ramon seconded this motion considering she's used the threat of liabilities and lawsuits in the past to justify going against the wishes of her constituents. But in this case, Marquise Harris Dawson says he can't wait to get in front of a judge, which means he's anticipating lawsuits. This is an attack on free speech. Counsel, you're about to go on recess. But first you got some business to do. 150 items for us to assess. A big agenda to hurry through. Nithya Ramon once said she wants accessibility for people to address their government. It's about time you challenged Marquise to reinstate Remote Comment. Vice Chair of the Rules Committee, you've got the power to do something. And I know that you're full of lies, but it's not too late to keep your promises. Bring back Remote Comment. A lot of people are here. You should be going way past an hour for comments today. And if any of you don't stand up for the people and ask your president to extend public comment today, you're a little bitch.
Thank you. I absolutely will stand here and for the record, I detest the N-word. I hate hearing it. I hate hearing it here. I hate, even when I listen to rap music, which I like rap music, I will not say it, I won't sing it, and I don't even want to hear it from the rappers. I wish the word would go away completely. Like, that's my thought. But you're, all right, but you're picking which words, okay, to ban. What about slur words on Latinos or LGBT? Or, you know, okay, you covered the woman one with the C-word. But you're picking and choosing which words we can, you know, people can or cannot speak. And I think that's a little disingenuous, sir and counsel. And you know what? But I'm not for you banning any words, okay? Because I don't think it's your job, okay? There's a thing called free speech. And even unpopular speech or speech we don't like or that we detest, which I detest it, okay? And I make it very clear and I let everyone, you know, I detest it. But what I detest more is for you to sit there and vote on what we can say or not say, okay? I don't like it. It's called the First Amendment for a reason. And you can laugh, sir.
Speaker, you should move on to your next agenda item.
All right, the next agenda item is, I agree with you. I don't want to see ICE in schools, okay? I don't think any, I would like, as a mom, I'd be terrified thinking that, you know, that someone could come in the schools. Okay, that terrifies me. But one thing I'm curious about is, you know, there, okay, ICE is coming in, you know, in the neighborhoods, whatever. But there's a big blue building that I've been warning you guys about that, you know, they have people that they traffic here Scientology. They hold their credentials and their visa, so they cannot leave, okay? And you know what? Maybe someone there would like to be rescued or whatever. But you're not, you know, like, you're just picking and choosing. You don't want to help anybody that may want help. So that's a little disingenuous too. So no, I don't want them doing it. And I don't want people who want to be here to be, you know, like, you don't have to go terrorize neighborhoods. But what if there's people who have said that they've been trafficked and they had their things, their credentials withheld? I have a friend that was in that situation, could not leave, you know, and, but you're not going to go check them because you guys are owned by Scientology. Okay, next one. Bounty hunters not identifying themselves. You know what? I think that's crap too. I think every law enforcement should have to identify themselves. I think every public official should have to identify themselves. Because how else you going to, I had a cop the ones that wouldn't identify themselves. And how do you file a complaint, okay? People need to be able to be identified, everybody. Everyone should be able to be identified. And, you know, and that's just a fact. And also, when it comes to the parking, all right, I say, no, don't increase it until you put parking meters on L. Ron Hubbard Way. Why do they get special favor, okay? Public comment. I want to shout out to Smoking Scan. And I'm like curious, I can't wait to see all the nonsense that has happened here today and all the nonsense that's going on. And he put it for the very last day. I've been coming here for a long time. I've been talking about, you know, the different abuses of Scientology. And Mr. Hugo says, oh, we're here to take the abuses of the people. That's what we get paid to do. We're hired to, you know, no, you're not hired to take our abuse. You're hired to work for us. You're hired to do your job. You're all hired to listen. You're supposed to be listening. You don't, except for Mr. McCosker. He's the only one that's, well, he's not listening now. That big fail, Mr. McCosker. But you know what? That's what you're paid to do. That's what you're paid to do, okay? That's what you're hired to do, to do your jobs, okay? And, and you, guys have been failing miserably on so many levels, so, no, and that's why you're getting so much hate in return, I get it, but no, I've come here a lot saying about, you know, you're gonna be hearing a lot more about the slave labor, okay? People are making slave labor in America, and you don't care. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jan Fukuhara. I was also called, but before I begin, I really do want to thank the president, council members, and my particular council member for having the patience, fortitude, and stamina to actually survive this on a daily basis. I thank you for that, as an owner, resident, stakeholder, and volder. So, as said, my name is Jan Fukuhara, and I am speaking on number eight agenda item for the conversion of the bid to a property from a merchant-based one. Um, I also am representing a lot of the Little Tokyo seniors. We are very concerned, as you well know, about everything that has happened in the last few weeks. We are very concerned about our personal safety and security, and having a bid conversion would actually help make that happen because of the increased funding and security for Little Tokyo. And that's what I will say now, because I know my time is running out. I have made these comments in public forum before, but I thank you again for your time, consideration, patience, fortitude, and support, and I hope that you vote to, uh, uh, approve this and adopt this for the bid conversion for Little Tokyo to property-based. Thank you.
Okay, hello. My name is Javon Houston. After fighting two years to improve my health care, it was taken from me by greedy corporations. Today, we should be celebrating to improve our health care and the living wage ordinance, but now it's delayed. These signature gatherers intimidated us and act violently against us, and they lied to Los Angeles voters. We demand and urge the city clerk to, to invalidate the petition and overturn the Olympic wage. We need this. We should not have to fight as hard as we do to get a decent wage here in Los Angeles. We are the essential workers of Los Angeles. We make airports run, we make hotels run. We are the workers. Please, stop the delays, stop the shenanigans. We need this. We should not have to wait any longer, we shouldn't have to fight physically for this. You city council members, please do, do what's right for the workers and the working-class people of Los Angeles, 'cause we make the city run. Thank you.
General public comment, as well as item 116, item 117, item 118, item 119, item 120.
Okay, you'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Oh, my bad, y'all don't want to hear all the items, but that y'all put it in the agenda, that's kinda cute. Um, it's really a shame how you guys want to act like you're adults and you're the big people in the room, when you can't even be in your seats during public comment, you know? Uh, that's really a shame. So we have all these, uh, settlements all over, and it really makes you wonder how you could cram millions and millions and millions and millions and meals and meals and all the fucking way you could say it, in between, like, dozens and dozens and dozens of items for the last day of council business at the end of a season, pretty much. It's pretty much like the, the season finale of city council. Um, they'll come back from recess after a while, when they go, you know, someone probably goes south of the border, someone will go north of the border, you know, there's a lot of Canadians in LA, they might visit some friends. But they're not gonna be here. We learned that from our mayor, that when it's time to do council business, they'll be outside of the city, and then they'll call up and be like, "Oh, I had no idea there were problems," as if everyone in the city doesn't know their problems. These hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of settlements per item is clearly evidence of this. The city is excited about going to court, they love it, and the system loves it even more. That's why there's a ever, a, a never-ending supply of court cases to go through. There's a backlog the size of maybe two of these agendas, uh, of cases, because this agenda, you know, I don't know if anybody can see this on the camera, it's about the size of a fucking textbook, and it's just paper, it's, it's not even a cover on this. But they did print it in color, which was nice. Um, I believe there's an item, uh, about censorship. Um, this council doesn't like naughty words. Uh, it's really disgusting how they can just come up here and act like they can tell us what we can and cannot say. Um, this is what the government, this is what so, anybody really want, does to you, um, when you're gonna be screaming about something, is that they put tape over your mouth, and, uh, they call what you're saying violence. Um, it's just, I'm saying "I'm" a bu, a bunch, I feel like an idiot, uh, but y'all aren't listening anyway, so who the fuck cares? Um, but the N-word to see where, I mean, what are we doing here? Y'all are a bunch of cunts. You know what's cunty behavior? Going up in front of a bunch of people that pay you over 200 grand a year, a combined total of a million fucking plus dollars, basically, once you take into account all your little gifts and stuff on the side. Um, and you go up there and you do the most craziest things. Like, we had Tracy Park up here complaining about people criticizing her, that was the most unshit, unhinged shit I've ever seen. Uh, and you know, we're allowed to call y'all cunts, you know, 'cause that's where y'all are. You take our money, make it disappear, tell us to shut the fuck up and deal with it, and act like you're giving us any options here. You're lucky, in the US, they used to do a lot worse than call you a cunt, when you, when you, when you showered the public in grievances. You know, it's really a shame.
I would like to call up Kathleen Higashiyama, G. Northway, Julian Alexander McCarran, and Steve Alexander.
Hi, my name is Esperanza Montes, and I'm, I'm a member of Unite Here Local 11.
Tengo cinco años trabajando en Flying Food Group como lavaplatos para vuelos internacionales de LAX.
I've been working for the last five years in Flying Food Group as a dishwasher for international flights going out of LAX.
Yo estaba contando con el sueldo olímpico.
I was depending on the Olympic salary, Olympic wage.
Porque como único sostiene mi hogar, quería yo sobreponerme.
And as the only person that is bringing in income, uh, for my home, I wanted to be able to get ahead.
Y comprar los medicamentos de mi esposo enfermo y que él no puede trabajar.
And, and be able to buy medication for my husband, my sick husband, that can no longer work.
Estoy aquí porque es muy importante.
I'm here because this is extremely important.
Estoy desvelada, no he dormido, salí de mi trabajo.
I've been up all night, I haven't slept at all. I left work.
A las siete de la mañana del día de hoy.
At 7:00 AM this morning.
Y vine derecho aquí.
And I came straight here.
Para que ustedes me escuchen.
I came here, I came here so that you could hear me and listen to me.
Y nos apoyen en la lucha.
And for you to join us and support us in this fight.
Por favor, concejales.
Please, council members.
Pidan al secretario municipal que invaliden.
Ask the, uh, ask the, uh, the, the city clerk to invalidate.
El referendum para revocar el salario olímpico.
The referendum to overturn the Olympic wage.
Y apoyen la moción número 113 del concejal Soto Martínez, por favor.
And support motion for item 113 from council member Soto Martínez.
Gracias a todos ustedes por escucharme.
Thank you to everyone for listening.
My name is Kathleen Higashiyama, and I am the granddaughter of Antonio Foliero, of Foliero's Pizza, and the daughter of Teresa Foliero. And I just want to extend a very heartfelt thank you to council member Hernandez and Wendy Castro, who's one of the kindest and most organized people I've ever met, um, the historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council with Darren, Darren Gold at the helm, who's just been incredibly supportive, and, um, our incredible community who supported my family's small business since 1968. Um, Foliero Square would be just such a beautiful way to honor the work of my grandfather and my mother, and our Foliero staff, and our incredibly supportive community. Um, and our small business is just a symbol of hard work and tradition and community, and we look forward to continuing the Foliero's legacy in historic Highland Park for many years to come, so thank you so much.
Hello, my name's Julian McCarran. I'm here to speak in solidarity for all those affected by the turbulence of 2025. Our nation is being divided as we meet. Massed armed men are kidnapping members of our community, family members of this very audience as we speak, all the while still uncovered from the fires. The community looks to you for leadership. The community is currently taking the load. We see no cohesion to correct the police for aiding federal agents, nor demanding of the mayor to take accountability of the personnel responsible for those policies. Everyone seems to be consolidating their own interests. Who is taking responsibility now? Our mayor? Any one of you? We need to put the interests of the community at the forefront, pressure the mayor to make effective changes within the LAPD, allow for access within city warehouses for community distributions. We cannot keep paying for storage units to do your work. Stop ignoring small groups like Imigo, Unión Barrio, and Operation Healthy Hearts, who are doing the groundwork. We need your help.
Signed up as Steve Alexander, I'm gonna speak on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11.
Okay, speaker, you'll have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Alright, so we have 116 and 117. 116 and 117 are mayor's emergency declarations. The 116 is related, sort of, to the immigration raids, although they, it seems like it's, the mayor's declaration is more focused on the protests against the immigration raids instead of the act, the big emergency, which is the immigration raids themselves. That is the emergency, and that is what the emergency declaration should reflect, is the fact that these immigration raids are happening in the first place. Now, it seems like you kind of did some corrective stuff on it to maybe try to make it reflect that a little bit more, so that's good if that's the case. But this emergency declar, the emergency is not, oh, there's protests against the immigration raids, the emergency is the immigration raids themselves, and that's what you should be addressing here. Okay, we have item, I think 122, which is more, I think that's continued, so we have 120, no, 122 is still there, that's more police funding in CD 12, Stafford B.'s district, no on that, no on any police funding whatsoever. You, defund and abolish this police department that assists ICE and other Trump immigration officials while lying and claiming that they don't. We have items 124 and 125, which are lighting up City Hall. We're lighting up City Hall for pride, while none of you say anything about how Trump is already planning to use the Olympics that's happening right here to promote his transphobia and to prevent trans people from participating in the Olympics being held right here in the city of LA. Nothing, none of you are saying anything about that whatsoever, so that's, that's something we should be noting here. We have lighting up City Hall for ADA anniversary, while you've literally made the chamber less accessible by putting this extra barrier here that didn't used to be here. People used to be able to roll right up to here. Like, the council rules still say we're required to approach the podium using the center aisle. You've never even changed that, so you're making us violate the council rules every day while make, while, while making the chamber less accessible. We have a street banner for Dine LA. You know what would help make, um, help the restaurants, working to get rid, what would help the restaurants, is ICE leaving the city, so you need to push more for that, because people are afraid to go out and eat at their, at the LA restaurants right now, because they're worried about, even if they're not undocumented, even if they're documented, just look like they're undocumented or whatever, that they come out and, that they're afraid to come out right now, because they're worried they're gonna be kidnapped by ICE or bounty hunters or whatever, so they're not going to eat at the restaurants right now. We have 140, which is the hate speech ban motion, like, going to general comment here, I guess. But the, um, but yeah, the, what I'll say on that, on the hate speech motion, is that I absolutely am against any use of the N and C words during public comment. It's racist, sexist, it is disgraceful to have to hear during these meetings. That said, the First Amendment is probably going to get you into a lot of legal troubles if you pass this, so I'm not really sure we can afford those, it's, it's kind of, your heart's in the right place, but it's just not going to work with the Constitution, probably. And it's also a slippery slope towards banning stuff you don't like that's not actually hate speech. Okay, so we have, I have 20 seconds here. You should not be taking this recess, you clearly didn't, don't even have all kinds of work to do, that's why you crammed 151 items onto this agenda today. It is so large, my phone couldn't even handle the HTML file. Cancel the recess and let's work on the serious emergencies to City Council.
Before the next speaker begins, Mr. President, it's been brought to our attention that some members of the audiences are playing their electronic devices in the audience, preventing other members from hearing in this room. So, to members of the audience, we ask you to not use your devices, and you've now been warned. If you do it again, that you'll probably be subject to, uh, removal from this chamber. Thank you.
Lydia Ponces standing on a sagna, the yagna, the stolen lands from the Tongva people. We have to recognize that Ms. Hernandez has the only one agenda item that matters. We have all these pages of bullshit, because nothing matters more than the children crying down the street. The children are crying down the street, ripped from their parents or left behind on the street, and you want to take insult on 140, on the N-word and the C-word? What about the children that are beaten, taken? What about the children that are left behind? What about their fears and their tears? How dare you take insult while you sit here and worry about your six figures for the year? Pray and cry and find the children that are left behind, that's what matters. The immigration children, I just spoke to that, and I just spoke about the N-word and the C-word. General public comment. There is a city, Los Angeles, mutual aid, rapid response, and tenants' rights without all of you. We're doing it without you. We don't show up, don't show up for your performative moment, your intentional photo op for your website or your next election, for reelection. What are you doing? You're taking recess. You haven't done shit to help the families. The children of the disappeared! It's Los Angeles, it's Los Angeles! Go with the community! Do your fucking job! For the people! ICE out of LA! ICE out of LA! ICE out of LA! ICE out of LA! This is 150 bullshit mo, agenda items! And fuck all of you for not showing up!
Uh, my name is Maro Kakuusian, speaking on behalf of Wendy Miranda with Esperanza Community Housing, and Alex Jasset from Physicians for Social Responsibility, Los Angeles, who couldn't be here today. We support the draft ordinance to remove substantial remodels as a basis for eviction. We call on the city council to pass the ordinance today. We want to thank council member Blumenfield for his leadership on this issue and for his staff in helping us get this across the finish line to protect vulnerable tenants. We also want to thank Blumenfield and council member Rahmann for keeping their word to meet the August deadline. Most rent evictions are carried out by landlords who have recently purchased the property, getting rid of longstanding tenants paying below-market rate rents is part of their business plan, and the substantial remodel loophole allows them to do it. We must put a stop to this and pass this ordinance today. Thank you so much, and I call on the city council to vote in support. Thank you.
Um, and an announcement for number 140. Uh, there is no action required today, as this item needs to be held over one week or to, uh, July 30th, 2025, before adoption.
Excellent. What's next? Members, I, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, and I just wanted to add, well, you know, we had a beautiful display of drones, 800, on Sunday, thousands of families came out, uh, 'cause we also did it as a beach party at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center, and it was phenomenal. Um, but I wanted to add Ms. Jurrado to your, uh, to your plea for everyone to support. But I wanted to add Ms. Gurrado to your, to your plea for everyone to support so many of those that are being affected by these raids. Folks, we need to remember the restaurant industry and how they're being decimated right now across the city, and the backbone of that workforce that keeps our restaurants alive. And so I just want to remind everybody, while we have an opportunity here to not just voice our support, we need to show up with policy, to make a substantial difference, to actually ensure that these businesses remain intact, so that they can actually continue to employ people. And so that's another reminder of what we have to be really focused on in this city, because we have to lend more than our voices of support, we have to show up in ensuring that they're able to remain in business and continue to offer employment to all of these individuals that are, frankly, all in fear. And so, you know, that was, I think, something important that we must underscore. And there was also a lot of concern from individuals about participating in the celebrations of Independence Day. And I know I received a lot of calls and concerns from individuals, saying that they don't feel comfortable doing that. What I want to encourage everybody to do is remember that it is important to also show up and continue to provide environments for your communities, and to show up and support with one another, so that people can help get through these very difficult and heavy times. It's important that communities have outlets to be able to still enjoy themselves and to have positive and constructive engagements with each other as community, and I think that's incredibly important. But more importantly, this celebration marks the first time we separated from king rule. So it's a reminder that we need to continue to push forward on all fronts, to ensure that the people's rights that are embedded in the Constitution and that was in the founding of this country, we continue to show up and fight for that. Thank you.
You so much, Councilmember Rodriguez. Any other announcements, members?
Colleagues, I want to thank you, okay, now I'm stumbling, but today I honor my mother. We have missed so many milestones together, and I hope you will indulge me as I honor her. Her death anniversary is this July, so we can finally share at least my first year as council member together. Her name is Jocelyn Joji Gorrado, who was born in Nogalán Laguna, Philippines. She was one of eight children. My Lola, her father had squandered the Coronado money gambling, and my Lola was left penniless, so she divided her children amongst family members in order to raise them. My grand uncle Mario, a bachelor, decided to become a single dad and raise her as he became an engineer. He was a doting father to her. But once he married, his wife employed my mother as a servant, and at age three, my mother was washing clothes by hand and cleaning the floors and taking care of other children. Despite the servitude imposed upon her at home, my mom never let the sun set on her. At school, she excelled and was a social butterfly. She was a cheerleader, an academic, a debater, and an exquisite dancer. My mom wanted to be a journalist, but under martial law, that was not allowed, so she became a bank employee instead. There, she met my father, who annoyed her enough that she dated him, and amongst all his admirers, of which there were many, my dad decided to ride off in the sunset with my mom. When my Lola immigrated to Los Angeles, she petitioned my mom under the 1965 Immigration Act, which presented my mom an opportunity at a better life. In her twenties, she moved to America to live with her mother for the first time ever, and this is when she famously gave my father the ultimatum. Come to America or marry her or else. And with $1,000 in his pocket, he flew to Burbank, leaving the life he knew before him behind him, very bravely. They went to Macy's to get the clothing, the rings, and got married at a non-denominational mass wedding in South L.A., and with $50, they started their life in a basement in Echo Park, with his in-laws living all above them and next to them. My dad, who's here today, worked multiple jobs as an undocumented worker until citizenship was finalized after their marriage. They threw telephone books off a truck, they were call center people, and eventually, my mom did get a job here in America at Union Bank here as a teller. That job, and through my parents' hard work and my mom's scrupulous saving, they were able to move to a home in Highland Park, where they raised me and my brother. My mom was the life of every party. She was so popular that on the first city council campaign I ever worked on, I would get many votes from Filipinos who remembered my mom because she was a dancer. There was one story where we were at a golden wedding anniversary, and she had danced with the groom so hard, he died on the spot, and we had to leave. That was the kind of dancing my mom did. Looking back, I realize how my mom had inadvertently prepared me for this job. When I became a mom, so unplanned, she was one of the few people who wasn't disappointed in me, and she showed me what unconditional love looks like, and how showing up is a large part of what doing the work means. She showed me how to be an organizer without even knowing it, always offering people a soft landing, an ear, or a helping hand. That the joy in the struggle means dancing, singing, and, yes, good food, and sometimes it also meant planning for the joy to happen, or it wouldn't get on the calendar. All those times she forced me into speech contests actually helped me become the public speaker that I guess I am today, and she also taught me that to challenge is to love, which we did quite often, she challenged me. And it's not lost on me that I do not grieve alone, and the grief now is shared by many whose parents that are migrating her, just like her, are now being taken away from them, and that their grief is even more profound, because they can't find where their parents have gone, and their due process are being violated, and they're unsure if they'll see them again. And so I pray to you, my mom, as I always do, and I pray that they find their way home. And thank you, colleagues, for indulging me, and may you rest in peace and may the perpetual light shine upon you.
Thank you so much, council member.